See what.
There we go.
Oh, I think so the uh. October eleventh, play more meeting has started at seven one, seven oh one P M. Uh, we have present, we have Bill Cranshaw, Annette, Natalie and Jim. Uh, Bob Brown is absent and Chris is expected to be joining shortly. Um. Bill, the first thing on the agenda, that's the minutes.
Yeah, we have two, we have two easy um administrative items we could do, we could do the minutes which are for.
Alright, let's take a look at the minutes of September thirteen.
Thirteen, right.
And I have a couple comments, I don't know if anybody else has any comments.
Well, oh, wait a minute, let me get ready to copy, um, hang on one second, Bill. And let me um make it so I can just copy them on the spot.
Want me to put them on the screen?
Oh, the comments?
No, the minutes.
Um, I can do it.
Okay.
I just want to put it and I'll just make the 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 um. The changes while you're. Um, let's see here. And um. Okay.
Which minutes are we um? Are we?
The month of September thirteen.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so and let me share them now and I will. I can't minimize, I'm not trying to minimize for sure. Okay. Um. There you go, can everybody see them?
Yeah, coming up. Yeah, they're up.
Alright, so I can make any changes.
Please.
What's that?
You go to page three, please. Yeah, so right there, um, the reference to the vote to carry the motion. Can we just make sure that we note who voted which way? I mean, you gotta look it up later, but I mean, I mean, I know it was probably me and Jim, but. I mean, anytime it's not unanimous, we should always call out.
Well, what we hear, who was there? It was uh Chris, Bob. Um, and um. Everybody was in, right? Alright, I'll just add voters. Okay.
Yeah, and then also in that that item.
Yeah.
Um, the discussion of that topic, it wasn't. Clear that we were voting on our version of the development agreement.
Okay.
I don't even know that the selectmen have have signed. Have signed off on that one yet or not, but just to be clear, we should be. You know. Add the reference to whatever the date was that we approved our changes and say that's what we were acting on.
Okay, so do. How's that?
Yeah, that'll work fine, thank you.
Okay.
So, anybody else have any um thoughts on the minutes?
No.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two with the noted changes.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion by Natalie, second by Jim.
Yes.
Uh, after you all in favor, we're gonna do a roll call, so uh. Natalie?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And that?
Yes.
And myself, Bill, yes.
Okay, thank you. Um.
Our second item was about electronic signatures, wanna intro that?
Yeah, let's do that, um. So what happened basically is that um. Town Council, uh, I don't know, they 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 came across something. Um. But they want us to um. Vote on that when the board wants to, they can use electronic or um. Um. Uh, what do you call it?
Signups.
Oh my god, um, stamping signatures, you know, rubber stamp signatures. But but electronic and we have to have something on file, so all I need is just uh. If the board decides to approve this, this is all it would look like here, I'll show you, I I'll share a screen. And it's just something we all sign that says um. Let's see here. Uh. Can you guys see that?
Yep.
So this is what we would do, something like this.
Now, Bill, I did have a question, I mean, should we should add Annette's name to the first paragraph? Since she it's she's on the signature page.
Isn't it?
Yes, as an option.
First paragraph.
Oh, oh, okay, gotcha, okay. Yep. Okay, um. Yeah. Okay. Let's, oh, what do they do here? Okay, I'll do that, yeah.
So we're we're just being honest to, go ahead, Jim, sorry.
My clarification, please, Bill, uh, only the electronic signatures that uh. People have agreed to, the ones that no, don't have to, right?
Yeah, it's not saying that that everybody has to do it, it's saying that in the event uh somebody wants to do it, they can.
Okay, thank you.
And we have to record it on all, you'll see it on all our decisions now, it'll say if, you know, maybe. Um. The board has voted that like use of electronic signatures is authorized or something to that effect.
Hmm. Yep.
Yeah, so if you if you want to keep doing it, you know, you you can do it whatever you want, but it it's just takes away any ambiguity.
Do you want one of us to make a motion with some of that language on the page?
Um, I think with the the changes noted, um, it would would I. Well, the only changes is.
Yeah, Natalie, if you could just make a motion, just use the title of that page.
Yeah.
If I remembered the title, I would.
Oh, hold on, I'll do the motion, I I motion that we approve the uh. That the town commander planning board vote to use electronic signatures where applicable.
I'll second that.
Alright, any further discussion? And I'll just go down through the list and record your votes, so uh, Jim, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh. I, Bill Cranshaw, vote yes, Natalie?
Yes.
And Annette?
Yes.
And Chris and Bob are both absent at the time of the vote.
Okay, great, and that'll, and then we just will, I'll record that or I'll have the um, the attorney will record that and then it works for future boards. It's it's a um, you know, we've done it. Um. Before um. Chris comes on. Uh. And we get, we're gonna talk about our drafts for the um, the zoning amendments and I've asked uh Bill. To run through the 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 home. Business basics, which are a little more involved. Um, there were two easy ones that I can just run through and one that I have, well, one of them. Is a question more than anything about the inclusionary zoning. Um, that I could probably ask you all right now to kind of ponder for a minute if you want.
So shouldn't we wait for Chris on these things?
Well, I was, yeah, we should, but I was just thinking on the um. On the inclusion, I wanted to explain the problem, but. But I guess Chris, yeah, we should wait for Chris.
Has there been any that he's? Uh, no, we should just wait for Chris, it's fine.
And and really, the the body art I have done according to what Bob wanted, but Bob has been on vacation. So um. So when we do the body art, the material I put in there has all of um, it has all of uh. Bob's notes and then I updated everything to it, it's not. Um.
Okay. Um, maybe, is there something, can you go over like the uh S H I?
Um, yeah, let's do that, yeah, let's do that.
Chris can catch up on that later.
Um. And. Why it's an issue, not an issue, or what, what? Um. This is the um. See. Can everybody see that, our strati- our subsidized housing or inventory?
Yeah, thank you.
This is um. As, where's the date on this thing, it was recent. Not the twentieth of of um. Of. September. Um. And we are at right now nine point five. Nine percent. Um. As soon as um. We get one fifteen. Uh. We're um, when we get them approved by D H C D, I think um, that would put us probably around our ten percent. But the but that doesn't. Help us uh in in. Meeting the new numbers from the census though, because we're gonna have in April, I think it is, we're gonna have new numbers, we'll probably be about an additional thirty-five. Um. To fifty units that we're gonna have to come up with for our um S H I.
Yeah, so you're saying, you know, that this percentage was based on the housing, the number of housing units we had in twenty-ten.
Exactly.
Now that based on the number of housing units we had in twenty-twenty, we have more housing units, so.
Right.
And not that many more affordable, so we're gonna, we're gonna slip a little bit, you know, drop half a percentage point or something.
Exactly, and I didn't, I wasn't ever worried about forty B, you know, since we've always been. Working well towards it and everything, um, I've had, I as I told you last time, I've had a um, much more. Activity in that stuff than I normally have and I can tell when it's forty B activity, you know, I get these calls that are. Um, a little more uh uh cryptic about the availability of space and stuff. And um, so I'm much more comfortable when we're at ten percent and we totally control our own destiny. And it's not that much more, so the the point is, these little, these little nibbles and stuff, we need, I I'd really like to keep them up. Um, and just.
Bill, can I ask you something?
Yeah.
Why is, why is? Don Grove not listed here?
Don't know. Is that um?
Housing authority property, but it's federal, does it have something to do with it?
I don't know, I'll have to check on that. Well, um, what is Don Grove, Bill?
Yeah. Not Don Road, not Old Mill Glen.
Right, Don Grove.
Private one on the other side of the street.
And why, why did you ask, wouldn't be listed, why?
I don't know why.
So, but you said, is it because it's what, in your system?
It's, it's federal. And maybe it it's not, it doesn't have a theoretical. In perpetuity thing, I don't know, it's just weird, I mean, because, you know, people who stay there, it's it's thirty-two family units and. They don't pay much of anything, it's all totally subsidized and has been for decades and decades.
I'll check on it, that's a good question, I don't know. Alright, there's a good question, um. So if we get, anyway, we got one fifteen. Has uh what, twenty-six units, I think, that would probably pull us up, so anyway, that's why I put that on there. Um. I got, like I said, I'm not. Really worried about forty B, but I am worried enough. More more than I have been because, you know. Who knows what's going on, so just say, that's why I wanted to bring that up. Um, the other thing that's coming up, let's see, did I put it on here? I think I did, we'll talk about tonight. M B T A communities, this. Oh. Now. I, um. I don't know if you guys remember, can you see that?
Yes.
Do you remember the M B T A, um, remember I was telling you about that where the, we have to um. Uh. Have a certain density zoning, which I I maintain that we have in two locations. And um. And still have not received um. I'm in the queue with D H C D to get a solid answer. Um, the other thing that I don't like about this and for us particularly is. Um. This was, this uh analysis was done by Lisa, our attorney, but um, I did our analysis. Earlier and um. We both grabbed on to. I don't know.
Right now, Bill, just just to backtrack for a second, so this is the final version, right, I mean, they sent out a draft version that everybody had problems with. At least in the comments about. And they changed it, but this is it, right, and there's nothing we can do about it from now on?
Well, now what we're looking at is the is is, we're looking at uh Lisa's comments on the final. But the 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 fine, the final has been released and these comments are on about the final version.
Okay, but whether we like it or not, we have to live with it.
Yeah, well, in that. I I'm not willing to yield that, I I'm saying that because I want interpretations on the stuff. I I need the answers to the 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 stuff that I brought up, so for example. For example, the um. Why can't we use the um H C I as our. Our M B T A community uh district, why couldn't we do that? And and if you look at it. Under the legislation, I made an argument to the D H C D, I sent it to him, I said, that's that's, this meets it. And I would say the same thing about the downtown overlay district and I, and and now they're disputing um. They haven't said anything about in about the. H C I district. But they're disputing that the M B T, I mean, that the uh downtown overlay district is because. Um, the the. The. Size of the the um. It 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 came out that the net. Even though we are net by by right intent uh density is six units per acre. Right, you can do that by right. But they're saying because it's part of a a mixed use. It 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 does account because it's a restriction, and I said that's a design restriction and we allow, and and the legislation allows for design restrictions. So. Anyway, I I, so I'm not. I will, I asked for clarifications, H and E's, and I also asked for clarification where we're okay to use our. Um, inclusionary zoning, because this, what I just highlighted up here. Tells us that I can't use or inclusionary zoning we just made. Um, you know, the zoning requires it not more than ten percent. In a project are required to be affordable units, well, we already have more, we require more than that with our. With our inclusionary zoning by law, so I don't want to undermine that. And and so they said, well, there's some, there's some, if legislation was passed. Prior to this, there may be um. Some exemptions, so I said, well, I want the exemption. I I don't want any part of this, if, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's fair at all because of those three reasons. And until they answer it, no, I I don't want to yield any of it, but the legislation is done and I'm gonna ask when I get the the. When I get the um. Initial de- determination from um. D H C D, I'll bring it to you guys, I'll bring it to town council, and then we'll decide if we want to just say, no, we we're consistent, we want a letter of. We want you to issue a notice of determination, and if we don't get it, then we use, we we come up with something else, like the the, probably use the powder mill or something like that. But I I think it's, I I think it's, the heart's in the right place for this and I understand that and I appreciate it, but it's totally unfair to us. And all the work we've been doing. Um. It just doesn't, it it it, we've been trying to do the right thing and we've done a a really good job at it and I, this rubs me so wrong. More than any stuff normally does with us. Anyway, enough of that.
Hey, I know that uh Chris has joined, hi Chris.
Hi, everybody, good to see you.
Chris, just to catch you up, we we, we approved the minutes, we um, did the item about electronic signatures. And then we skipped to uh planning updates and we discussed now that S H I numbers are gonna change a little bit with the new. Sentence info, and now we're just finishing up the M B T A community thing, but we have not done item number three to talk about the uh amendments.
Thanks, Bill.
Yeah. Thank you, Bill, for hosting.
That also means I'm giving it back to you, Chris.
Oh, no, I wasn't expecting that.
Had to hear me go on a rant. This is a.
Hey, Bill, Bill, I do have a question though. The old M B T A rules. Were, you know, fifty acres, but I think they changed it to one and a half percent of developable. What's our number now, how many acres, just?
I I'm not sure, uh, Julie is working that out with their G I S thing, I don't know exactly.
I mean, it's a heck of a lot, less than fifty.
Yeah, yeah, i- it's on the D H C webpage too, but we're ver- i- I mean, it's on the um. The D H C webpage, but we're 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 recalculating everything to try to figure. If it's. And and we also um. They 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 took some of it away, but but by and large, it. It, it's not. Well, anyway.
It, they didn't design these regs for us, they designed it for places like Lincoln and. You know. Weston. Places like that, it's not designed for us, we weren't considered.
That's what I was just clutching about to the board.
Yeah. It's unfortunate, but.
We gotta, we gotta.
We support you, Bill Namsor, we support you, Bill Namsor, on uh pushing back. Fight the good fight when you feel better.
Bill Namsor, we also support you in excusing yourself and lying down, is it time? I think it's time.
Yeah.
I'll be, I could go for, I'm gonna go through this first one a little bit, I I I'll be okay, thank you.
Safety first, Bill, safety first.
Where am I gonna go on the floor?
There are, there are no heroes in our planning board meeting, thank you very much.
Okay, we don't like heroes.
No, we do not.
Uh, so uh, it it's if it's back to me, Bill Crenshaw, is that it?
You betcha.
Okay. Um. Um, okay, so maybe um, Bill Namsor, we can talk item three, which is the proposed zoning law. Amendment. Zoning by law amendment. Um, I can. Let's see if I can bring it up, unless, do you have it handy, Bill Namsor, or should I try to grab it? To share.
Which do you want me to bring up, Chris?
The zoning bylaw changes that me, you and Bill Crenshaw are going back and forth on.
On the, oh, on the D O D.
Yeah.
Alright, we can do that one, yeah, let me um.
Is it nine, four, five?
Uh, I I have it ready to go under um something here.
I have it right here, I'll, I can share.
Here it is, I got.
Oh, okay.
Are we gonna, we we might wanna uh, actually, you might wanna adjust it as we're watching it, so why don't I open it from the. You want, you wanna have a working copy, think we, in case you wanna make changes, or? Let me just open it, go through over it.
Um. Yeah, let's, let's see, let's see, yeah. Okay, I I have it on Word, if you just let me share, I can bring it up.
Alright. Let's see, I I um. Stop share. Alright, allow. Now you could, everybody could share.
Okay. Um, okay. So this is nine, four, five, this is about the mixed use and multifamily reduction. Um, we use this section. For uh the D O D. And do we use it for any other? Items, Bill, besides the D O D?
No.
Just the D O D, right?
Right.
Okay. Um, alright, so. We'll start at the top. That we 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 talked a little bit about this a handful of meetings ago. Um. Part of this is a cleanup, um, but also, we we got triggered to do a little bit of this because of another zoning. Bylaw changes that we're looking to make, I think was in nine. Four, six, maybe. Um, the the, I think the big change. Um, what, there's two, two parts of this, one is this sentence here. That was just some clarity that we wanted to make sure that. Um. Building permits couldn't be issued until all all of this was agreed to. Uh, the the thing that Bill Crenshaw, Bill Namsor and I went back and forth on recently was about. Um, this concept of a minimum square footage. Uh, this is regarding. So when we had, when the issue a special permit, a special permit essentially by us for the downtown overlay district. Uh. We're allowing. Um, the multifamily and mixed use developments. Uh, to be down to a certain square footage, right now it's listed as eight hundred square feet. And we're, we're, we were thinking about reducing that potentially, um, Bill. Namsor. Uh, there is, you wanted, you you wanted a six hundred square foot number, and I think Bill Crenshaw was pushing back. And I didn't really have a good bearing to make an opinion on it. Um. Eight hundred always seemed pretty low to me, but you, Bill Namsor, you wanted six hundred square feet on this.
Yeah.
Can you just explain why?
Thinking, I mean, I'm not, you know, I, it's not my hill to die on, but but the but the. The reason I thought it was good um, was because this is um, now, remember, this is not six hundred square foot per unit. This is six hundred square foot of lot area. Required per unit, or eight hundred, or whatever the case is.
Yeah, so for example, if we had three thousand square foot lot unit, which is small, but just as an example, that would allow. Five units. With a six hundred square foot number.
Exactly.
Right.
And and the reason is, and I understand uh Bill's, Bill's. Position on this, and I, and I, I can get it completely, um, I think that having the tool, the toolbox might work. For. When we have uh, or trying to really work on um, maybe for see, places where it's not gonna be. There may not be cars at all someday. You know, somebody, I could see downtown, or maybe some, not everybody even has a car, maybe senior um. Senior units, maybe it's just, you know, people are not having cars, and it would be just something we could use. If the a tool that was was. If the situation was right, but like I said, after I thought about it, you know, and I I thought about it, when you guys, when we were talking about it, I don't. Um. I don't know, I a- and I was wondering if maybe it could help also with some uh the second floor redevelopment and some of the downtown. Um. Um, retail establishments that have second floor, you know, maybe it would make that enticing there too, right now, like, for example. Something like above the Pleasant Cafe, you know, they have probably three or four apartments up top there. I don't think they have any parking. Well, I don't think so.
Alright, let's take this at a different angle, what's the risk of going too low? Bill Crenshaw, did you have thoughts on why it would be not a good idea to go too too low with this number?
Yeah, well, I mean. And to keep one thing in context, I mean, the the allowable is like fifteen hundred.
Fifteen.
Hundred is already a big difference, but. The problem I see at eight hundred, there's two problems, one is, there's a lot of compromises that are being made to fit. At eight hundred, because you know, they, the step backs go away, the buffers go away, the landscaping goes away, lots of compromises and. There would just be more of that if we went to six hundred, and the other issue is. You know, if they start going to six hundred, we're gonna get some pretty. Small units, you know, when they're doing extra, they end up with a lot of studio types and, you know, we need the two bedrooms and the three bedrooms. You don't need a lot more tiny, tiny studios, so. It's not really helping where we are, I mean. Maybe there's some unique times when going to six hundred would be fine if it was a certain site and. You know, it wasn't adding more than eight or ten extra units. Um, but just allowing, you know, six hundred square feet. Uh, of land area for the general development, I mean, Jesus, if we tried to stick an extra. What, extra dozen? Units on the Grover site? I mean, what, all it would be is a building and pavement, there'd be nothing left.
No, I see your point, and you know, you said something, Bill said something very interesting with that, which is, which is really makes me feel good. Because. Eight years ago. Nobody would have said, we're looking to get some two and three bedrooms, they would have said, we don't want the two and three bedrooms. And 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 um, so it's kind of. I I I. I agree, I I I withdraw my. Six hundred and.
Well, hold, hold on, I got, I got a question though. Well, hold, hold on, I got, I got a question though. I, I do like the anchoring towards what we're, what we're looking at for housing stock diversity, so I think that's. Very valuable, right? So if, if, for how. For, for housing stock diversity, if we're looking for to increase. Two and three bedroom units, we should always keep that in mind with how we rewrite regs, of course. That, but my question is, if we list this as eight hundred. Is that set in stone, or can we waive that num- that eight hundred number under special circumstances?
Not unless it's specifically called out in a bylaw.
Okay, so, so like an applicant, an applicant can't come to us and say, you know what, I wanna renovate those second floors. Above Amory's tomb, um, and I'd like to do six hundred square foot units. Or sorry, the math would work out that it'd be to six hundred square feet per lot size, but like.
That's a good question. Um, the way it would work, i- if somebody wanted to do that, they would go to the zoning board first. And get a variance. And if the, if the zoning board did grant it. They would come to you and you still are not obligated to take it.
Okay, so there's still a path, there's still a path for those special other projects that you mentioned, Bill Nemser.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Um, and, okay, so that's settled. Um, unless, does there any other thoughts on this, Natalie, Annette, Jim?
Well, my only thought is that having them as special circumstances for the six hundred, if. If, if it's written down that we can consider that, that's gonna become the new normal. I mean, we have developers approach us who automatically. Plan, you know, build their entire plan around the eight hundred square feet. So. What's going to happen next is they're just going to automatically plan around the six hundred square feet. That's just what's going to happen. It's not gonna be special circumstances. That's gonna be the new normal.
Yeah.
So.
Thanks, Natalie.
As much as we would love otherwise, that's like, when developers read this language, that's all they see.
Yep. Annette, any thoughts?
What, what is, what is a square footage of a micro unit? Do we know?
Yeah, so I, I, I'll just take a step back. What we're talking about is. I don't, I don't know the answer to that, Bill. Maybe you should, maybe there's an answer, you know, what's.
They're two, two hundred and twenty-five and like, they're very small, but this is. And that, this, um, that's what I'm saying, this is a little confusing, but this is. Because this is the lot area. We're not, the, the, the unit size, the town doesn't regulate. Um, so you could have.
Okay.
Yeah, these are, we're not talking about allowing six hundred square foot unit sizes. We're talking about allowing.
But the five thousand square feet ti- times the, the.
Bingo.
Six, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, wouldn't they be able to put micro units into a lot size of, say, six hundred?
You, you, well, you, you, if you did a micro unit now, it wouldn't help you. Um, because it wouldn't increase. It wouldn't increase, we, we regulate, okay, you can have like X amount of units. We don't say, you know, you're limited to. Um, uh, fifteen hundred square foot one bedroom. So if, I mean, if we said you're limited. There's, there's, there's an argument, and we might wanna look at it when we create our zoning for um, powder mill, but. But if we were regulating by um, square footage, and we said this project is allowed to have. Seventy-five thousand square feet of residential living area, then you could make an argument that the. Micro units would make, may make more sense for a developer, cause they could get more of them in. But when we regulate it by the number of units, it doesn't make, it's no advantage to them. See what I mean? Thanks.
Yeah, I understand. Alright, thank you.
Um, these are good questions. These are fun.
So I may have buried the lead on um, talking about this update, but in the. This, the, previously, weeks or months ago, we looked at changing. Um. This, these numbers here, which we did, I believe, Bill Nemser, right?
Yeah, we consolidate that.
Yeah, so we did make some changes to. To, to this um, structure here. And this is where we settled on, we discussed this many weeks ago. Feel free to, again, we can talk more about it, but this is where we landed. I think back in like July or August or something.
I mean, Chris, I, I gotta play, I mean, those now match our. Inclusionary zoning. Numbers, cause the old stuff was out of date, because the inclusionary. Came on later. And then the other change we were doing is. You know, adding. Some of the units have to be at sixty percent of AMI.
Right, exactly. Yep, and so we did. We provided an example, right? Not example, but we spelled it out right here, essentially.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep, and that's what we talked about previously, and I just wanted to make sure that everyone's aware of that. We, these aren't, we did not highlight those changes, but we, this is what we discussed previously. So now we have a certain percentage of the, of the units will also be. Um, be required to be at the sixty percent AMI. And not just an eighty percent AMI number. Does that make, I, I'm seeing, I'm seeing Natalie look a little confused.
No, that was excitement.
Okay, good, alright. Uh, so here's another sentence that was added. Um, I'll just allow you to read it.
Yeah, that's helpful.
I assume this came from Bill Nemser. Right.
Which one? Sorry, I, I lost you on that one.
The, the sentence highlighted here in the center of the screen, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that, that captured what you guys wanted, right?
Um, if long as it captures what you wanted, obviously, we want that to be true, so.
So, yes, it's true.
Yeah, town hall doesn't wanna pay for that stuff.
And that was really it for this sort of last round.
So then.
To this.
So the only thing we'll take out, Chris, then we'll go back to eight hundred. You know, I mean, I can do it.
Yeah, I'll let you do that, but if, as long as.
If, if everybody else likes it, now this, if they like this, if you guys like this. I'll, I'll go ahead and place the way. The way I have to do this is, is, is weird, is um. You might remember, but I'll, I'll bring it to the select board to be sent back to us, and then I'll advertise it.
Hey, did anything happen with the map?
Yeah, um, Julia's working on it now. Um, Rick. Um, had, Rick thinks. There was an amendment, there, it's been two amendments to the DOD since it started. Uh, Julia is in the same boat I am right now. Um, and um, so it. And in. It's probably not likely that she'll have that one ready. Anytime. It might be a time for this uh. Town meeting, but um, but I wouldn't tie it to this. I would keep. Going with this, but we should just look at that, and we'll, and we have to decide if we wanna change the boundaries, which is a good question now, because. Um. Of the um. Uh, the Saint Bridgetts, you know, there's, we're getting all that activity over there. A lot of people look at that, cause they're putting on the properties for sale.
Great.
And that's not downtown overlay district, which. Everybody thought it was.
Yeah, not technically, but there is something to be said about. With the, a brewery across. The, across the pond.
There is, but that's in a different, remember, that's in the.
I know, that's in the HCI, but like, there's connectivity there from a sort of business standpoint.
I think you could make an argument.
For, I know, I know there's, I know there's the small housing units that are kind of in between along. Um. What road is that? That's, the fire station is on.
Sudbury.
Sudbury Street.
Yeah.
But.
Well, whatever goes in there, we have an opportunity for, remember, for um, additional uh. Waterfront activation. And, and removing some of that pavement, cause there's a boatload of pavement in there.
Um, okay, so that's the agenda for, for this evening.
No.
No? What, what am I missing?
No, the, um.
He wanted to talk about the other three articles.
Oh.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, I wanna, well, the big one is, m- my stuff is, I got two, I got the dinky ones. I just wanna show you two things, but Bill, do you wanna wait for the, do you wanna not do the um? Um, home-based businesses?
Uh, it's gonna be pretty quick, cause it's. Formally defined, so I can do the home-based business, just an update on that.
All right, do you want me to run through my easy ones first, then?
Sure.
Okay. Um, you guys asked me to do the body art. Um, so. The way I did it was I went to um. I went to the zoning store. And. Um. Okay, let's see if I get this to go. Over, um, Bob, and, and I based, Bob was kind of overseeing this. Um. And. He uh. Here we go. Can you see that? Yeah. Here's a letter from Bob. This was Bob's input here into uh, I don't know if any of you have seen this, but this is kind of what we. You know, originally, we talked about moving. Um. Uh, the locations, which I did, which you'll see. And then these were things he thought we should add to this. One notable change, guys. I forgot, I don't know if I mentioned this or not before, but one thing we didn't know when we brought this. Up for amendment was um, that the health department. In like. Two thousand and. Five or four or something, adopted a complete. Body art regulatory thing. So most of the stuff we have in here, other than the locations. Is superfluous. Uh, you gotta do it anyway. Um, so, we took, we kept that in mind, and you'll see what we changed. So this was. This was what Bob had recommended. On top of what we had discussed originally, and, and basically, you know. So we'd all discussed the spacing requirements, this is. We got rid of that. Um. All these, like, the hours are already. Regulated by the Board of Health, but ours are, are stricter. So I thought if you wanna keep that, we can keep it, if not, no, the ten to ten. Um. It, then, and the parking was the only other thing, and the signs, I mean, like this, but this is. Okay, fine. So it really is, is not a heck of a lot to it on that. Here was the, the question, um.
Can we go back to parking? Are uses like this typically have a parking requirement?
No, um, they, they have, they would. Well. Here's how it works. If you, if you're in downtown and you have. A, a business, you know, you're gonna fall in a category or something, and it would u- usually say um. You know, retail has X amount of spots or whatever. And in the downtown overlay district, if it's an existing. Um. Uh, uh, we call it like a, 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 a refit of an existing. Uh, there's a provision for that, because you don't want people just building new parkings, you know, creating more and more parking. For, if there's not a new. Um. Increase in square footage and, and things like that, but. I, in general, um, I don't see any reason why we would even worry about that in there, but. It's there.
I mean, I, I'm thinking three, four, and five don't even need to be there.
That's.
In my mind, whatever applies to a barber shop can apply to this.
That's, that's what I'm getting at too, yeah. I don't, I don't understand the reasoning to keep.
Why don't we, why do we have any of this, of seven, three, two, though?
Exactly. We don't need it.
Except two. I mean, two is the only one I think kind of spells out from a zoning standpoint. But it's, it's, it's also redundant, because the board, that's the board health's problem.
Right.
So.
I thought we're gonna just drop the entire body art. Chapter. And just cover it as a generic other use with a.
Oh, I don't think so. I, I don't think that would, I, I, well, the reason is, um. The reason is, um. Uh, that we have on. Okay. Um. We added cosmetic tattooing, remember?
That's fine, well, that's just a definition thing.
Yeah, but, but it, it, the, um.
Well, I understand why body art's just not on the table of uses.
Let's see, where do we put it here? Where do we go here?
Where's barber shops covered in the table use?
We don't have one, I don't think. I think we have.
No, it's like personal services or something, right?
Yeah, personal, right. Yeah, oh, that's what we did. We, we, we matched it with personal services. So here's body art, here's what I did. And, um, yeah, I don't know, um. Oh, I know why, I know, I remember what I found, um, in the Board of Health. Thousand page of body art regulations, which is a riveting read. They, you are not allowed to do cosmetic. Tattooing. Anywhere other than a body art establishment. Something to that effect. That was one other wrinkle that, that I found.
I'm, so, I'm fine with this change, keeping it as body art establishments, it just means that we. You know, it's, just makes it clear, and it mimics general or personal service establishment. I'm fine with that. It's, it seems like an easy way to change the principal uses table. Um, does, are there other thoughts on, on that? Cause I guess the other way to do it is just to eliminate it completely, and then note that it's. It falls under the category of general and personal service establishment.
Well, we could do that too. But, but when you say the category, with the category, um. You, 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 you're just talking about i- in, in terms of like our, we would say that our zoning requirements. Uh, for that use, it's fall under general or personal.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I, I don't, I don't mind the separate listing, especially since it has its own definition, but I think that's all you need. We don't need the extra. You don't need that extra standalone section that body art now has.
So, so just, just we can get feedback here. Um, does there, does, is there any other feedback on the use table down below? If we just change it to, to mimic. General services, do we feel okay about that?
I do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so that part is, I think, settled, so let's go back up to the top. So, Bill Crenshaw, you're, are you suggesting that our conversation was to get rid of seven point two entirely?
Yeah.
And then, any information regarding body art establishments is just in the definitions?
Yeah, I, I mean, less, I don't know why we would care about operating ours, cause. Presumably Board of Health sets that.
Yeah, theirs are like. Theirs are like, it's more or less the same. I think there's a little difference, but, yeah.
No, it's just. Regular use.
Yeah, I don't, I don't like redundancy and, and, and zoning laws or with, you know, so I, if the Board of Health has it, I feel like we. Get rid of it here.
Okay.
Um, let's, the section seven point two point one, it says, body art establishments as defined in section eleven shall not be considered. A customary home occupation.
Yeah, that was the thing that Bob wanted to hear, what. It was the, the big burning question was, was Bob. Bob wanted to know what Bill. Who, who's working on the home-based businesses thought of that.
Yeah, so let's talk about that. What do you think, Bill Crenshaw, about that language?
One technical issue is there will no longer be such thing as a customer and home occupation. That definition goes away. Uh, so it would need to be changed anyway, but. No, the presumption is that it would, if it wants to be a home-based business, it has to act like all the other ones, and if it's. You know, one person a day, it's probably gonna be allowed without a special permit. More than that, it has to go through the special permit process like. Any other high activity home business.
This, this also seems a little discriminatory against body art. And it seems in the same way that some of these other items have been, you know, not being allowed next to. You know, a liquor store or something and whatever else, but. I'm fine with it going the way.
When it was made. It was, it was definitely discriminatory against body art when it was.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that, that comes, that comes through in the language, but I'm fine with getting rid of. It all completely, cause like you said, Bill, if. Well, you know, we're assuming though that. Well, you know, we're assuming though that. Okay, let's 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 assume that the home-based business occupation does not pass town meeting. And that this one does. We should still make, we should still think about it. Being a lot, you know, being aligned. In that sense. Right? Wouldn't we want? Would we want this section here? If we didn't update the the home-based business occupation? Oh, I I stumped Bill Crenshaw. I love it.
I I still think it should be treated the same as in the home business activity.
I agree.
Okay, good.
Well, wait, wait, Bill, but you're saying as a home-based business activity?
No, no, assume that never passes or is not presented at town meeting and the only thing that happens at town meeting is the body art change.
Right, I get it.
Will happen is then I could open a body art place in my garage. As a customer, I mean, I could pretend it's a customary home occupation or whatever. Or I could fight it out with ZBA for a permit, but either way, same as if I wanted to open a nail salon in my garage.
But if if somebody has a home occupation and they want to have a a body art studio. And they get okay from the health department, which they have to have. Then they still have to. As if it was right now and the way our bylaws stand, right, and it. They would still have to. Would they be able to come for a home-based business? Special permit now.
I think we need to get rid of that first sentence on the previous section uh, that said that it shall not be considered a customary. Customary home occupation.
I yeah, and I think Bill's numbers question is in light of if we get rid of seven, two, one. And what Bill Nems are described, would it still, would they still need to go, would they still get a go get a a permit with the zoning board?
I think that's. Because we don't, I mean, we don't, we don't want somebody coming in saying, well, the health department said it's okay, and I could see five hundred people a day in my garage.
Well, doesn't then it just turn into every the exact same thing that the zoning board is doing now?
Right, exactly, exactly.
But I think our point is that it should be treated just like a nail salon. Right? Would would. I I we're trying to, we're trying to be equitable about this. That's.
Yeah.
Kind of more our I my angle and that's the the kind of feel I'm getting from this group is that. We don't see a need to treat this differently than a nail salon or a barber shop. I think that's the point.
Yeah, I just think we, I just think whatever we leave in there, we just don't want to have a situation where. Somebody feels that because the Board of Health okayed it. There they there's a, you don't have to deal with the zoning aspect of it.
Well, that would be the same as a nail salon though, too, though.
Yeah, but but.
Well, yeah, as a, does, don't they also need a a permit from the Board of Health to have a nail salon?
Oh, I think so.
Right? So it would be the same scenario.
So this is what we're what we're thinking about doing is throwing. If we get rid of seven point two point one. We're throwing body art in with everything else that is currently very ill-defined under the home occupation by law. Which is not great, but it's just adding to the pile of forty-seven other issues. If we don't update that, I mean, the bylaw, that bylaw needs to be updated.
You know, there there's another way to to deal with that. We could go back down to the to the use table and have it not qualify under residential. Right?
But I don't, I don't want.
I don't think it does.
Okay.
Actually, that's a good point.
So then it didn't, this is this is not applicable then, right?
And what's it say there? Um, oh, there you go. Yeah.
Okay, so it can't be a customer. It can't be a home-based business, right?
Guys, are you really gonna make me just do hobby tattooing? I can't make it into a business. That's that.
Wait, oh, you're saying, wait. Oh, we said, no, no, but that's what we had. What do you? I mean, we could change. What do you guys want?
No, no, I'm fine with that because I want it to match all other sort of professional services in this realm.
That's what I did there, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, I just realized. That's as a, but that's not as an accessory use.
So, right, primary use, but yeah, good point.
All right, yeah. An accessory use like.
Hairdresser.
It's probably not listed in accessory use, is it?
There's a hairdresser, though, listed, so.
Yeah, but home uh, body art is not listed in accessory use because.
No, but hairdresser here.
Right, but he's, yeah, I know it.
Right, no, I, yeah. So if we wanted to to match a hairdresser shop, it we would have to add. Add here, body art and under this, under under six, right? Ooh, this is getting, this is getting a little dicey.
But it's all because of sequential. Of the various articles.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not too concerned that, you know, if if only this passes that. You know, in the next two months before we try to add the word body art to this line. Um, that there's gonna be like a million people opening. Body art establishments in there.
Um, I'm not worried about that either, but I do worry about perception. If if I have to go in front of the the town and explain why we're allowing. To go and allow body art to be an accessory use in a residential neighborhood. I feel like that could generate some controversy.
Bring it on.
I'm also trying to get things passed, Natalie.
I know.
So. That would mean that this article would change that line. To add hairdresser, comma, body artist, that was my column.
And if and if we're voting, if if in the same town meeting, I'm I'm trying to. Convince people to change the home-based business zoning bylaws and add body art. Can I can just smell conspiracy theory coming?
Oh, yeah, you're right, but. But. But that uh.
Well, then we do this. Go back, Bill. Can you scroll back up to, I think, section three of this table?
Like, be pissed about private kennels, not someone getting a tattoo. I don't know, man.
Right here, maybe that maybe we just scroll up a little bit more, Bill. Thanks, Bill. Maybe maybe we go back and just get rid of this line and then make it fall under the general and personal service. That way it doesn't have to be called out separately in that way. But then we would have to update this, the the table of accessory use so that it 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 matches. Because right now it calls out specific things in the general. I don't know.
Is there anything in the accessories table that says personal service?
It calls them up more explicitly. Hairdresser and stuff like that.
Didn't know if there was anything, if there was a catch-all one as well.
Yeah, unfortunately, the accessory use is so poorly defined. It calls out hairdresser as one of the very few specific. Activities, so I'm not sure. Um, although. Just going back to this particular chart that we're showing here. Um, I noticed that for some reason we don't agree in industrial. Would not that be a special permit? Under body art, just to be consistent with general and personal service, if that's what we're trying to do.
Oh, yeah. So, Bill, look under I on this table between the two highlighted ones. One's a Y and one's a BA.
So we can have it the zoning board if it's an industrial, not that that's likely to happen anywhere.
You know what? I I don't, I don't know if I want to, I don't know if we need to. Have accessory use table mention body art. Maybe it's just fine because. It's if there's no changes to the home-based business zoning as as maybe, maybe that doesn't pass. And and this will be the law still. Then. I'm fine with, I I don't mind these changes. And if the home-based business occupation regs pass town hall, then aren't you guys updating that accessory use table anyways?
Correct.
So I'm fine with it either. I'm fine with this.
Just leave it the way it is.
I I don't feel I need, I don't feel we need to s- to really solve. Work through all of this. I think. I think this cleans it up, that we're just basically putting body art and treating it the same as any other sort of personal service establishment.
But are we gonna get rid of that that one sentence that said it is not a customary home occupation?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
That's what I'm thinking. What do you guys think? So get rid of, get rid of section, what is it, Bill? Section, section?
Three point one. No, what are we saying, three point?
Seven point one.
Seven, seven point two. Seven point two would just fully go away.
Okay.
And then the definitions will get updated accordingly. Do we, uh, do we want to review that those definitions again?
I'll share them here.
And then the change use table will be changed as presented. So all of all of seven, two goes away.
Okay, so seven to the.
All of it.
All right.
Wait. Okay, remove seven to.
Yep.
The whole thing. Okay, so that means that we're gonna have new numbering here.
Yeah, you're gonna have to renumber.
Well, no, no, I'll just, there won't be seven, right?
I know, why do you just say delete it? That's all.
Yeah.
You don't have to renumber.
Well, I'm saying we're we're, no, 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 it'll renumber all the other sections.
Yeah, if there's a seven, three and a seven, four, then.
Yeah.
Renumber those.
Yeah, all those are gonna be.
No, you you don't have to. You just leave seven two as deleted.
Okay.
Yeah.
Keep the number.
All right, so seven two is gone. Are we gonna allow it in the um, industrial? That was the thing I didn't.
It says yes right now.
Yeah, what do you want?
I feel like it's fine with the Board of Appeals, right? Isn't that, isn't that what it is for general? Services or whatever it's called?
Yeah.
That's that shouldn't be.
Say that again, Bill Nems, what do you mean?
That that shouldn't be. Yeah, that should be changed over to planning board.
So, hold on, when you say, are you saying general and personal services under the industrial zone should be changed to planning board?
Right.
And so if that's the case. Then we would, we would want body art establishment to match that, too.
Well. Do we don't have, the the zoning board of appeals. Does not, I can't think of as many instances that they regulate, they go into the business zoned areas. You know? So if we're, if we're going over um. Type of of petitions. That the zoning board usually goes over. It it's typically residential. And it may be a a home use in a residential, but it's not. Like, i- it's unusual, and I can't think of any time it's happened that I have them working. In the business district, and I've been working with them. You know, the full speed ahead, so it might be, it might. It might be, I mean, I don't know. If we're changing it, we might ought to change that, then maybe. But it does bring up another, you know, we're 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 bringing, we're we're introducing changes that. You know, somebody's gonna pick up on, and like you said, smell conspiracy when you do stuff like that. Maybe we should just let sleeping dogs lie and try to get our body art through and get our home-based businesses through. Who cares?
Um, maybe, maybe just make under body art establishment, maybe just make. The industrial column a go back to PB.
Okay.
And then leave it and don't touch general and personal services establishments for now. I don't know.
Okay. All right, then that's what I'll do.
And then next town meeting, you can do another cleanup and, you know, clean up. That BA listing under general and personal services in the industrial.
Okay.
Separately.
Industrial.
Yeah, I like that. One meeting we say we're making body art the same as. General and personal, or the next one we say we're making general and personal same as body art. It's good.
But there might be other places where it's listed as BA. And it's not appropriate for BA. I don't, I haven't looked through this whole table yet, so. Maybe there's.
What, what do you do? You're not studying the table? That seems crazy.
We're gonna, we're gonna make Bill with Nems or at night read this table again and again.
What makes you think Bill Nems or doesn't do that now at night?
Okay. All right, so let's look at the definitions for body art then, Bill, just to make sure we're we're clear on that. Back up. And then Bill Nems, are you gonna rest? Because COVID, COVID, does you recover better when you're resting fully, mind and body? No, pun intended right now. All right, scroll down a little bit more to or up to the definitions wherever they are.
Here.
Oh, yeah.
Where did they go? There we go.
Okay. There's not a lot of changes here, guys.
Cosmetic tattooing, that's fake eyebrows or something, right?
Yeah, that's the idea. The underlines and crossouts are the proposed changes, of course.
That looks great.
All right, hearing no other objections, I'm fine with running with those changes to Bill.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, good job, team.
On, Bill.
All right, um.
What else?
Um, oh, the um, inclusionary zoning question, that's what I had. Um, basically, um. When we did the inclusionary zoning bylaw. Which. Let's see here. Um, here's. I think this was just something that, you know, we've made one or two changes to it already. And I think. I think this would be one I'd like you guys to chew on, you know, we'd have to make a decision tonight, but. Okay, can you see that now?
Yes.
So we've got right here, um. You know, using our density bonus um, formula. We've got maximum of ten bonus units. And that is fine. In our circumstances we've had to date. But I've just had two situations where I'm calculating stuff, where people are coming in. And we could get way over ten. Um, so may, you know, um, and it may be desirable to do it. So I would suggest that because this means that. Regardless of the size of the parcel, you're capped out at ten. And I can't remember why when we did this, um, maybe Bill remembers. I don't remember how we ended up with ten or what the reason was. But. Um, it seems to me that it we we might want to use a percentage or some other formula so that we can. Adjust it as appropriate. So that's my, that's my other thing. Uh, does it make sense that we can just chew on that and think about that?
What do you think is appropriate?
I don't know, because I I I if we go. Now with the MBTA stuff, I'm not a hundred percent confident. You know, how we're gonna adjust things like that, but offhand, I don't think. Why do we care? Why do we want to have a not to exceed? Um, let the planning board figure it out.
Don't, I don't know why.
Um, you know, I I I I, that's my whole thing is. Um, even if we set a percentage, you know, but but I, why would we even do that? What's the advantage to us? If we have a situation like, um, I don't know, whatever.
It would, it would only be restricted if there was concerns about having too many, I think.
Yeah.
And I don't know what the intent was when this was written, but my. Guess is that there might have been some concerns about there being too many, or maybe there was pushback for some reason. On, you know, on bonus units, units, but. That would, it would have someone, there was a reason to restrict it, so, but I don't know what that reason is.
As I recall, the the reason was. Just because nobody understood the. You know, what the impacts would be, and frankly, we still don't because nobody's ever used this. Um. So I would. I'd need to run some example or something to see what the unintended consequences are. Um. And we should also.
And we should also understand that. Yeah, if we do change it, you know, we might wanna review the other things and make sure that the town is getting enough in exchange, you know? Maybe that triggers sixty percent AMI's, I don't know. But in that paragraph A. One of the key sentences is, um. Third to last sentence, all other standard dimensional requirements of four one 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 shall be met. So that means you can only do it if you don't have to ask for waivers in. Other things like. You know. Uh, permeable space or buffers or all that stuff. So if that. Is actually understood and enforced, then. You know, maybe lifting the cap doesn't make any difference. But. I still wouldn't wanna run a. Bunch of, uh, what ifs, just to figure out what the unintended consequences might be.
Right, like looking at some of the lots that are coming up.
Or past projects perhaps?
Yeah.
Well, our stuff is, most of our stuff has been smaller scale. Um, and, 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 okay, well, it's just, it's just a discussion point that I ran into. Um, and the calculation was that if, um. If somebody's building in a, uh. Like at the St. Bridget's area there, how would you, okay, so. You know, you, would you be ca- just, th- th- we were doing the math. And you're, but you're capped at ten bonus units, and I just didn't know if it's something we wanna talk about, and I still think we should consider. You know, discuss it and figure out, like Bill says, it's probably a good idea to do some exercises with it.
Uh, Bill, I'm happy, I'm happy to, Bill Nemser, I'm happy to work through some examples. Just so we can wrap our head around this, maybe, maybe that's the way to do this.
And let's keep in mind that this is ten market rate bonus units.
Right.
This is not limiting the number of affordable units.
Right.
No, 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 i- i- it, it says, um. But you can't just build the market rate. You gotta, i- 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 in other words, they would have to, they would. Pretend you're not. They're creating the, the. Affordable units in proportion with it.
It's, yeah, but he's, he's right, but it's saying it's just, it, it, it limits it to ten bonus.
Right. Actually, you know what? I think I'm wrong. This is a very confusing thing, and frankly, I kinda wish it would just go away, but. This is really back to lot size. And number of units per square feet of lot. And so if it's at fifteen hundred, but they have affordable, we can allow. And squeeze that lot size down to whatever it is. That's what it's really doing.
Yeah.
Super confusing, and I kinda wish it would just go away. Well, maybe we should work on it next.
Fine, yeah, I'm fine. I mean, we've worked on some of the other. We've done some work on affordable units. Let's continue to do work on affordable units, the language of this, so I'm, I'm. I'm happy to put some work towards this too, Bill Nemser. Um, but I don't think there's anything else for us to discuss on that one anymore. But thank you for bringing our attention. What else?
Um, I think the, the, the only thing we have, if, if Bill wants to give a quick, um. Update on the, um. The, uh, um, home business. Yeah, so just as a reminder, the, uh, accessory home business, um, use. Was being set up that. Very low impact, low. Visible home businesses would basically be allowed, um, as of right. Anything with higher intensity would need to get a special permit from ZBA. And the chair of the ZBA looked at it, and he thought the language about. What could be allowed by special permit was a little too restrictive, and he basically. Little simplified version is, he wants, you know, the, the numbers defined for. Uh, as of right is fine. But if it's a special permit, it just, it's a special permit, and ZBA figures out what's right. After that, they don't really want any constraints or guidelines as to, you know, what to consider when they're doing a, a special permit, so. You know, anything that. As of right would currently be, you know, no offsite employees. No sign, just like one commercial vehicle and no more than. Um, two visits a day would be essentially allowed by right. Anything beyond that would require a special permit, and ZBA would figure out. You know, hours and activity levels and all that stuff, but they don't want any. They don't want any, um, zoning text about what they should consider when they're doing the, the special permit.
Um, that's confounding to me, um. Particularly because. The origin of this effort was that there wasn't. Good quality guidance to help the ZBA make decisions. And that was, that was the fa- the. I would say one of maybe two foundational principles as we went through this effort, so. Again, that's confounding.
Yeah, and. I'm, I'm hoping, you know. It's kind of a pendulum swing, you know, we went really far with guidance and restrictions, and then they took it all. Away, and I think when they see another version, they're gonna be like, oh, that's a little too undefined, and can add a little definition to it. Um, but. Um.
Bill.
Even if they're just getting more confident on their decision-making, because they've been doing so many of them.
All right, are you? Um, I, I kinda feel bad, you've put so, you put such good work and effort into this. I don't, you know, I've found it to be. An immense improvement. Do you still wanna continue? Putting effort towards this?
Fine, I just, you know, especially I just, I've been away, and I just haven't had the time to finish it and get it right back to them, but. Um, that'll happen shortly, but I, I think it's valuable just for the fact that we define what doesn't need a special per. Right, cause right now, the existing definitions are so.
Yeah.
Anything's better than what we got. I think Bill's right. I think it was, I, I can understand what Chris is saying with the. Um, with the confusion a little bit, but I think, but, but it, it, I think we worked through some good stuff. And, and I, I thought it was nicely done.
I, I think, so my feedback as, as chair of the planning board is that. It's gonna be hard for me to support a, a reg change that. I'll just allows the, the ZBA to figure it out on their own. I, 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 I do. You know, I think this, so the feedback you, you can give from me, Bill Crenshaw and Bill Nemser is that. I think it's important to have. Um, guidance on how the ZBA will make decisions, cause. You don't know who the future ZBA members will be, and you want consistency. So I, I, I'm, I, I will put my foot down and say I will not support anything that has zero guidance. It has to have guidance on how to make decisions. And that, that's fundamental, and I will not budge on that, so.
Well, it, it will definitely be better than existing conditions. No matter what.
But what, I'm, I'm saying you can provide that feedback, and, cause that's. That's very much where I sit on that.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, so you can use, you can use that feedback, you can leverage that feedback however you, you, you need to, but that's my feedback.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
That's all I have, guys, on the twenty fifth, um. I, I.
Sorry, Bill, Bill Nemser, um, Bill Crenshaw, is there anything else we can help with on that? Any other feedback, or what, what can we do?
Um, not really, it's, it's still my court, and I just gotta get the revisions out, and I'll just. You know, get distributed to everybody for further thoughts and.
Okay.
See what the ZBA chair has to say.
Okay, let us know. Um, Bill Nemser, I had a question on it. Any, sorry, any other board members have questions on the, on the home ba- home-based business? Okay. I see, I see it. We've, we're all a little confounded by that, that's okay. Um, Bill Nemser, um. I saw that the, 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 one of the, the, the Green Meadows Future School Committee was looking to come and come to the planning board. Um, to, before, for some, uh, some zoning variances that were needed for the new. New Green Meadow Elementary School, but potentially, has there any been any more communication on that at all?
Yes, I'm, I'm meeting with them next, uh. I think it's either Tuesday or, um, oh, look right here, it's either Tuesday or Monday. In my office, I was gonna include you in it. I, um, have, I'm, I've not met with them as of yet.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if you're available, but, um.
I'll do my best to be available.
It is.
If not, we can find another representative from the planning board that might be available.
Okay, uh, it's coming up anyway.
Okay, that's fine. Let, let, let me know, we'll figure it out, but I, I think it's helpful to have some representation from the planning board.
Yeah, I, I, I would agree.
Who, so, so this, this is the committee, I'm, if you're not aware, that's trying to get funding to build a new, uh. Elementary school to replace Green Meadow. Um, and their, their process is kinda quick because of the funding structure. I'm, I'm not gonna get into that right now, but they may need some zoning variances based on. Some of the restrictions in the zoning law, zoning bylaws for, for that area of town. Um, so that may come before.
We don't do that. No.
Well, then, Bill, why are they, Bill Nemser, why are they coming to us? I thought it was for some zoning stuff.
Uh, no, it was not on variances.
Um, okay.
Yeah, i- i- they're coming to us on, I don't know why they're coming to us. Uh, I mean, now, because they just, they, I, I spoke to them today. And, and it's a review of stuff, I don't know exactly. They're gonna have to go to site plan, through site plan with us.
Okay.
They're gonna have to go through, um. Um, design review with us, with limited scope, you know, and, um, that's it.
Okay. Who is the applicant, who's the actual applicant for that? Is it the, is it the?
School, I think it's a school.
The Maynard, Maynard. The Maynard School System? Maynard Public Schools, MPS, Maynard Public Schools, is that the actual applicant?
I haven't seen the application yet. I don't know.
Okay.
I'd imagine it is.
Okay, yeah, I'm just curious, cause you know, there's, there's some different town entities. W, who, obviously, there's some select board members on that committee, I, I just wanna, uh. As we're going through this, I just wanna be clear who the actual applicant is.
Sure.
But that was it, that's all I had. Anything else, guys?
All right, any update on two powder mill? We're gonna get that soon? Um, I'm expecting a update, um, from them by early next week. Um, there is some, there's, right now, it's being, um, to. Well. Uh, as I understand it, um, there's a question on, um, the OOPA lease. So, um, there's, there's a possibly the, the. The occupancy may change, meaning that I'm not sure where OOPA ends up in this whole thing yet, but I'll know more by. Next week.
Uh, sorry, I remembered one other item. Um, Natalie, there is a committee that you're looking to. Pass, uh, move, move on from. Do you remember, um, another town committee assignment?
Yes, I.
Yeah.
I, uh, I'm not gonna move on from it yet. I'm gonna talk to Bob Brown about it, if that's all right with you.
That's absolutely fine. I just wanted to, it, it was on my, it was on my list of things to check in on, so.
Yeah, no, I, uh, I feel like I'm. Bill Crenshaw can say otherwise. I feel like I'm. Doing a good job on it, and I kind of wanna say, but you know, time, time. But anyway, I'm gonna talk to Bob about it to see what his timeline seems like, so, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's fine, uh, and then let's just talk as a group, cause I want, you know, like, you know me, I like to have some consensus on things, if possible.
It's a good committee. It's a really. A good committee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. What else, Bill? Nemser, anything else?
That's it. That is it. Uh, we have, uh, we have a public hearing, a small one on the twenty fifth. We have town meeting coming up on the, what, twenty fourth, I think. Um.
And are there any instru- last instruction we had was that the moderator wanted. The planning board there, is that? Do we need to be there at all if we don't want to be? I will be there, I'm just, but I'm trying to give space for others.
I don't think the board needs to be there.
Okay.
If the chairs are.
Just wanna make, if there's instructions, I just wanna know what they are, if there are any.
If they change, if they change, I'll let you know.
Okay.
And then we have, um. We also have a special, why do we have a special, another special meeting? Oh. Oh, oh, that's one thing I wanna tell you guys, planners update, um, you. We, uh, uh, have an appeal, um, of the zoning board decision for the, um. Summer Street Art Studios, you guys may know about that. Um, you know, there, there's been a special permit I've been working on since. I don't know. Heck goes about, and, um, that was appealed, so there's going to be, um. Litigation about that, so that, that we did get the, a formal appeal process started for that petition. Please tell us. What's that? Please tell us that we're not involved with that. No, you're not, only, but, well, we are, we are in, only, and then it's a laboratory for us, Bill, you and I are. Ah. But, um, from a, uh, well, yeah, no, that's it.
But Bill is very involved, so he's gonna have to take more naps during that as well.
Yes, yeah, that week is gonna be, I was just looking, that's a, that's a three-weeker, okay, three-minute weeker. Okay, well, that's all I got, guys.
Um, anything else, team? And at Jim, anything else?
No, I'm all set.
Okay. All right. Good.
Okay, I'll just do it, John.
Second. All in favor, raise your, raise hands.
Are we closing the meeting?
Yes, that's the plan, Jim. Uh, would you like to? Would you like to close the meeting?
I would move that we close the meeting.
Thanks, Jim, okay. I second that too, all in favor?
I.
Meeting's closed, see you guys in two weeks.
Bye, everybody.
Bill, Nemser, get better.
Get better, Bill.
Thank you, bye.
Thanks, Bill.